Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Sutter County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We'll do public procedure for public comment. Members, the public will be allowed to address the board during the board's consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card noting the number of the agenda item about which you wish to speak. Present to the board clerk. If you wish to speak about more than one agenda item, please fill out a separate speaker card for each item. If you speak in a public comment, please note that on the speaker card when the matter is announced, please approach the speaker's lectern in back and you'll be recognized by the chair and myself. Okay, roll call please.
Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Zigamire. Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Supervisor Conant.
Present. We will now have an invocation led by Pastor Park and Dr. Lou will do the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Arise, shine, for your light has come, and the glory of the Lord has risen upon you; for darkness shall cover the earth, and the thick darkness the proud peoples. But the Lord will arise upon you, and his glory will appear over you. Nations shall come to your light, and kings to the brightness of your dawn. God who created the universe and watches over and protects human lives and all other living creatures on earth. We come before you today for a meeting to discuss important issues and decide on what needs to be done in our community. First of all, I lift your people who gather here, who prioritize our community first and seek the good and benefit of others. Bless their lives, keep them healthy, and let them shine your light in their lives. Second, I pray that you would watch over today's meeting. Let their words be edifying and building each other up. Let their hearts be united, although they may have different ideas. Help them help us to find unity in diversity and diversity in unity, so that we may build your kingdom here in Yuba City, the community of hope, peace, and justice. Lastly, I pray that you bless our city, our community, and our country, especially as we have the presidential election coming up in November. Help us overcome divisive rhetoric and come out as one nation under God, dedicated to enhancing the well-being of others, regardless of their religion, race, and language. Make us one and use us as a nation, a city on a hill for liberty and justice for all. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Park and Dr. Lou. We now have three presentations.
Will Zachary Hamel, Emergency Operations Manager, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing October 19 through the 26, 2024, as California Flood Preparedness Week?
Okay, this is California Flood Preparedness Week, October 19th through the 26th. Sutter County recognizes a public safety threat flooding poses to the population, assets, and the economy of our county, and ensures multiple flood events, including the historic floods of 1907, 1940, 1955, and 1997. I think we left a few out there. Anyway, Sutter County is particularly at risk of flood from three rivers, the bypass that have resulted in the construction of more than 260 miles of levees. The theme California for Flood Preparedness Week, October 20, 24, is California floods. Be aware, be prepared, take action. During this week, local, state, federal, and federal agencies will work together to inform the public about the dangers of floods and how to prepare for their homes and families for a flood and plan for recovery. Sutter County participates in California flood preparedness week by increasing public awareness of flood threats. Zach, you want to have a few words to say?
So flood threats are our number one issue here in Sutter County, and we have some amazing staff that work on that every day to mitigate those issues. So I want to give a big shout out to the Office of Emergency Management staff that work on that every day. A couple of things is just today, we got our renewal for our storm-ready county designation, so I'm happy to announce that we have that designation again. We are finalizing our 1997 flood education film and working with the museum in developing a new flood exhibit at the museum. And then lastly, I would be amiss if I didn't say, as part of this is, "Don't drive in or walk through standing water, turn around, don't drown," is a big campaign for the National Weather Service, and please go to bepreparedsutter.org to sign up for code RED. That's our emergency notification system. Thank you.
Thank you Zach. You guys want to say anything? I just want... We're right. I just was thinking, you know, we left a few big ones out here. 86, and don't forget 2017, the spillway failure where we evacuated the whole Damm County. Thank you. Just because of a Damm.
Will Sarah Eberhart Rios, Director of Health and Human Services and staff, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing October 20th through the 26th, 2024, as Lead Poisoning Prevention Week?
Okay, this is Lead Poisoning Prevention Week, October 20th and 26th, 2024. This week of October 20, 2026, 2024, is Lead Poisoning Prevention Week, when individuals, organizations, and communities around the county join together to amplify the message that lead poisoning can be prevented and ensure that we have a safe environment in Sutter County. Lead poisoning exposure is particularly harmful to children under the ages of six, and protecting children from lead exposure is critical to lifelong health. Although lead can be found in many products and locations, lead exposure is preventable. Sutter County Board of Supervisors proclaims the week of October 20th, 2026, as Lead Poisoning Prevention Week in Sutter County, and call upon a residence to observe that this week, by helping families, friends, and neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand the value of lead poisoning prevention.
Yes, I'm Katrina Whitaker. I'm the Director of Nursing at Public Health, and I have a lead prevention team. It's very small, but they're very mighty. They collaborate with environmental health to identify and eliminate the sources of lead that are in our community and help make it safer for our kids.
So I learned something last year. I always thought that when we talked about lead poisoning, we were worried about lead paint. But, you know, that's, we haven't had lead paint now for like 30 years, maybe 40. But I understand it's not that. Can you talk a little bit about where it comes from?
I hate to tell you, but some of that paint is still around, so it is still around. We still have that. But the main source is actually choices. It's using lead in clay that's made to, for serma. If those of you that know what serma is, it's used on children culturally. That's our number one source. The other is from, what do you call it, Heritage Pottery, that is made from lead-sourced clay, and they cook it in the microwave and things like that, and that lead leaches into the food. So those are our two main sources right now.
Thank you.
Will the HHS staff please remain up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing October 23rd through the 31st, 2024, as Red Ribbon Week?
Okay, this is Red Ribbon Week. That's a tongue twister. October 23 to 31, 2024, alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation. It is imperative that the united effort by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse. Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyle, and Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in communities across the nation, October 23 to 31 of 2024. Businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, schools, and other organizations will demonstrate their commitment to safe, healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red webands and participating in drug prevention activities. Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of October 20, excuse me, 23 to 31 of 24, as Red Ribbon Week, and proclaim that you to participate in drug prevention, education activities, not only during this week, but throughout the year, making a viable statement that we are strongly committed to drug-free lifestyle. Did you want to have a few words?
Yes, please. Thank you. My name is Rob Greer, Prevention Services Coordinator for Behavioral Health. We'd like to thank the board for recognizing this. This is also a great opportunity to get the word out again into our communities, to put it in the forefront of what's going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment. Members, the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no action may be, or discussion, may be taken on any items appearing on the posted agenda, not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment cards.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have six public comments. The first public comment is Tony Farley.
Tony Farley, South City. Commissioner D., I as Commissioner D. for safety for full sure, police power, fire departments, and fireworks. Commissioner D., Missouri allows local tax, all, present all opinions state local, no state, no county taxes, all is local taxes for both city and county, allows public city officials to have fireworks patrol, fireworks above New Year's, New Year's end for July, and allows, of course, enforcement of ordained fireworks and also police services to beat six, which is Walton, your current Baines district, pretty much. So as Commissioner D., Missouri is a good tax. It allows me to pay my taxes for public city officials and government officials for public city heroes. Support them.
Thanks, Tony.
Our next public comment speaker is Dale Whitmore.
There you go Dale.
Okay.
There, that's better.
I'm here on behalf of the Yuba Feather Hunters, Anglers, and Outdoors Association, and the topic we'd like to discuss briefly this afternoon is access to the Shanghai Bend Rapids, which right now has been half mile between the end of Shanghai Bend Road, and the Shanghai Bend Rapids has been locked off for probably three years now. We have been working, we were working with Yuba City Council, working with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and due to change in ownership, we're now brought the, going to bring this to the attention of the Sutter County Board of Supervisors, and we'd like to get that road opened again. It had been open for probably 50 years before that, and then various discussions about homelessness and trash dumping and so on, all of which are constant problems in various places, but it seems that we have worked our way beyond some of that, and we'd like to see that section of road opened again, so people can drive down to the actual rapids and park, and then walk over the levee to get to the fishing area that they've been fishing for decades. Thank you very much.
Thank you Dale. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Janet Johnson.
My name is Janet Johnson, Sutter County Patriot, and I love my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Dear Sir or Madam, the State of California has passed AB 969 enacted in October of 2023 using the urgency clause. The bill states, "This bill would declare that it is to take effect immediately as an urgency statute." Section 2 of the bill states, "This act is an urgency statute necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety within the meaning of Article 4 of the California Constitution, and shall go into immediate effect. The facts constituting the necessity are, in order to ensure that county election officials know what voting system they will be using, particularly with upcoming 2024 March presidential primary, it is necessary for the act to take effect immediately. The California Constitution, Article 4, Section 8D, states, in the pertinent part, 'Urgency statutes are those necessary for immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety. A statement of facts constituting the necessity shall be set forth in one section of the bill.' Section 2 fails to state any facts supporting the assertion of a threat to public peace, health, or safety. In this Assembly Bill..." "In this Assembly Bill, there are no facts stating either that any election official was unaware of what voting systems they would be using, nor any facts amounting to an urgency within the meaning of Constitution, California Constitution, Article 4. Additionally, voting by citizens, that is accurately counted, does not impact public peace, health, or safety. Thus, there is absolutely no logical, legal, or constitutional basis for the alleged urgency. Therefore, the use of the urgency clause to bypass normal legislative process was and is unlawful and deprived the citizens of California of an opportunity for public referendum. Misusing this urgency clause to avoid checks on legislation and prevent public input is an abuse of legislative authority. It prevents the citizens from having a voice in the legislative process as required by the California Constitution. Article 2, Section 9 of the California Constitution provides for the referendum process in California. Citizens have the power to approve or reject statutes or parts of statutes, except for urgency statutes and some other fiscal exceptions. If the legislature had not improperly used the process reserved for public health and safety emergencies, the citizens of California could have reviewed and challenged the law by referendum pursuant to Article 2, Section 9 of the California Constitution."
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lee Willer, AG. AG, my apologies.
Well, if I keep coming, you'll get it right eventually. Okay, this time I'm not even going to try to speed read. You have been placed in the unfortunate position where you are unable to conduct the 2024 election without breaking either state or federal law. You cannot comply with newly enacted state laws without breaking federal laws. You cannot comply with federal laws without breaking this newly enacted state law. The Help America Vote Act of 2002, hereafter called Hafa, requires accurate voter rules to be maintained by the local jurisdiction. California counties have hundreds and even thousands of ineligible voters on their rolls, and this violates Hafa's requirement for accuracy and compliance in elections, including the voter rules. You know this because many citizens have taken it upon themselves to audit the voter rules, because our government does not. They have found hundreds and thousands of ineligible voters, and some of these citizens have come before officials only to be disparaged and ignored. Many of our elections are decided by less than 100 votes, and sometimes less than 10. inaccurate voter rules are an incontestable fact. The Election Integrity Project California reported that they found 1,834,789 more registered voters than eligible citizens in the state voter rolls, including active and inactive voters. Hafa was enacted due to the 2000 Bush-Gore election debacle, which greatly divided voters and destroyed voter trust. Simply articulated, if voter rules are not accurate and compliant, elections cannot be certified as compliant or accurate, meeting the standard which within Hafa, it was designed to provide a zero-trust model for voting systems, which includes transparency to address trust issues when using electronic voting machines. Although election fraud existed in individual local races, these widespread trust issues did not exist before electronic machines. In addition, Hafa falls under the Civil Rights Act. Therefore, certifying inaccurate or noncompliant elections violates every citizen's civil rights when elections are not accurate or election laws have been violated. There's financial reasons to comply with Hafa too. Not only is Hafa a federal law, but because this county has accepted federal money pursuant to Hafa, it is also contract law. This county entered a contract with the federal government when it accepted funds under the Help America Vote Act.
Our next public comment is Tina Hessong.
I'll continue. The Board of Supervisors voted to accept these funds. County council signed off on the contracts, and the ROV clerk recorder agreed to comply with the terms of that contract. If this county follows California law, and specifically AB 969, the county cannot meet the contractual requirements of the Help America Vote Act. If the county intends to follow California law, the county will deprive the citizens of the transparency required, resulting in a misappropriation of federal funds. Failing to follow the federally mandated Hafa, the county would have to return the Hafa funds to the federal government. If the county returns the Hafa funds, the county cannot pay for the election equipment that the county is required by the state law to use. Boards of Supervisors have a problem. Each of you swore an oath to United States Constitution and to the Constitution of the State of California. Both constitutions guarantee citizens the right to have their vote accurately counted and to elect their representatives. Your oath is not to the government, but to the Constitution and to the people that you represent. Certifying uncertifiable elections is a federally, in a federal election, can reach the level of treason. Do not assume just because county election officials have not been held accountable to this point, that they will not be held accountable now and in the future. We pray that those involved do not expose themselves or the county to this financial obligation. We respectfully demand that the county comply with both the California and federal constitution, rather than following the newly enacted and unconstitutional California laws. First, the process must be transparent, and the counts must be verified. Second, only eligible voters should be allowed to vote. To meet these requirements, the county should have one-day hand-counted elections, requiring ID to vote, and mail-in ballots limited to legitimate absentee voters. Your thoughtful consideration of the matters contained in this letter and the requirements of your oath to the United States and California Constitution are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
That's our last speaker.
Well, that was the last one. Okay. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Consent calendar. Consent calendar groups together those items of interest which have considered non-controversial, or which prior policy direction has been given to staff and requires only routine action. The board, to the board. The chair will advise the audience that the matter may be adopted by one total motion. However, the board is at his discretion upon the request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. We have 1 through 16. Move to approve.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All, put this to all favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. We'll now move on to the number 17, which is the Water Works. So we're adjourning the Board of Supervisors and convening the Water Works Board of Directors, and we'll let the roll call stand. Procedure for public comment. Members, the public will be allowed to address the board during the board's consideration of each agenda item. If we wish to speak on any matter on the agenda, please fill out a separate speaker card noting the member of the agenda item which you're about to speak, and present it to the board clerk. If you wish to speak about more than one agenda item, please fill out a separate speaker card for each item. If you speak at a public comment, please note that on a speaker card, and when the matter is announced, please approach the lectern and be recognized by the chair. We'll let the roll call stand, as I said. Public comment. Members, the public will be allowed to address the Water Works One Board of Directors on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. The state law provides that no action may be taken on any item not posted on the posted agenda. We have one consent calendar item. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Other business? There's no other business, and no closed session. We're going to adjourn the Water Works District One Board Meeting of Directors and convene an in-home Support Services Authority Governing Board. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, would you like the roll call to stand?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I haven't quite got there. I still got to do the procedure for public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the Board of Directors during the board's consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card noting the number of the agenda item which you're about to speak. Present it to the board clerk. If you wish to speak about more than one agenda item, please fill out a separate speaker card for each item. card for each item. If you wish to speak at a public comment, please note that on a speaker card. When a matter is announced, approach the speaker's lectern and be recognized by the chair. The roll call is standing. Public comment. Members of the public are allowed to address the In-Home Support Services Public Authority, the Board of Directors on items of interest to the public or within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any item not posted on the opposed agenda. Go ahead. We have a...
Approval of the Public Authority In-Home Support Services Program hourly wage, increasing the hourly wage to $17.35 effective January 1, 2025, approval of the related administrative rate increase of $0.10 per hour, and approval of the health benefit rate decrease of $0.30 per hour to allow for the establishment of a non-health benefit rate of $0.30 per hour.
Good afternoon. So on August 13th, the board approved the MOU between the IHSS and the United Domestic Workers. We are going to be moving wages to $17.35 effective January 1st. This includes an increase of California state minimum wage of $0.50. It also goes into effect January 1st. The approval on August 13th of the MOU increased the public authority's administrative rate from $0.45 per hour to $0.55 per hour. The increase of $0.10 per hour in addition to the hourly wage will be increased effective January 1, 2025. The fiscal impact to the maintenance of effort is approximately $150,000, and the cost is going to be covered by the Social Services Realignment Fund. We're recommending that the Public Authority Governing Board approve the increase of the public authority administrative rate, that's $0.10, decrease the health benefit rate in order to establish a non-health benefit rate, which is life insurance, and then the hourly rate of the increase to $17.35 per hour.
Thank you. Any questions? We need a motion for this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Correct? Staff?
I think it should be paper.
Doesn't have that on my thing, but we need a motion. We have a motion and a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most passing unanimously. There are no other business, no closed session. We adjourning the In-Home Support Services Public Authority Governing Board and re-convening the Board of Supervisors. Let the roll call stand. The clerk will announce the appearance items.
Presentation and update on the Sutter County Community Health Assessment and Improvement Plan.
Microphone. Yeah, turn it on.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. My name is Dr. Fang Liu. I'm the Health Officer for Sutter County, Yuba County. Joining me is Leah Northrup, the Public Health Branch Director, and she will be presenting shortly after me. Next slide. Oh, there we go. The purpose and objective of this presentation is to give you an overview of the top causes of death and diseases in Sutter County in the past year, health trends recently, disparities that we've noted across the areas in Sutter County. And then lastly, Leah will finish with the overview of the Community Health Improvement Plan. So, when you look at the comparison of 2017 to 2019 versus 2020 to 2022, you have seen that we are improving in at least the top two causes of death, all cancer and coronary heart disease, otherwise known as heart disease overall. Unfortunately, we are seeing concerning increase in unintentional accidents and injuries, stroke, and Alzheimer's disease, so otherwise kind of colloquially known as dementia. The top causes of burden of disease. So I know that a couple of years ago, I really presented on the burden of syphilis. So we have some good news and some areas of improvement. So the good news is that you could tell we have improved in the burden of diseases for females aged 15 to 44 for diagnosis of syphilis. We still have quite a ways to improve for males of all ages for syphilis, and congenital syphilis are unfortunately babies born to mothers with positive syphilis. So we're working on it. It's just very challenging. Some health trends is that, I'm not going to go through all the bars, but you can see that we're trending up, which is concerning in terms of accidents, accidental injuries. Men are more likely to die of accidents and unintentional injuries. If you look across race and ethnicity, our black residents and non-Hispanic white residents in Sutter County have the highest death rates from unintentional injuries. And then most individuals who die due to accidents and unintentional injuries are younger than 50 years old. So when we look at life expectancy, we see that overall the life expectancy for Sutter County residents is a little bit lower than the California average. So we have 77.5 years. California average is 79.9. And even across our county, if you go more green is healthier. So the ones that are darker blue have poorer health outcomes overall. And you're like, what is that big gray area? Unfortunately, because the number of Sutter County residents in that area is too small to kind of do that calculation about their burden of health outcomes overall. So I'm going to turn this over to Leah to finish out the CHIP process.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So I'm going to go over the Community Health Assessment, which is also known as the CHOP, and the Community Health Improvement Plan, also known as the CHIP. And so essentially, the Community Health Assessment is a process that we use to gain insight into the health status and health needs of our community, while the Community Health Improvement Plan builds upon that process and addresses the health needs and issues that were identified in the CHOP, and then also those factors that contribute to disease risk, health behaviors, and poor health. So also, as part of the CHIP, we developed three priority areas, addressing homelessness, also reducing sexually transmitted infections, and then building resilient communities, which has three sub-priorities of addressing adverse childhood experiences, behavioral health, and also nutrition and food access. And this is just a quick graphic of our CHIP timeline. We completed the Community Health Assessment in August of 2022, then moved into developing our CHIP, which we finished in August 2023, and then we have been holding meetings ever since. And so these meetings we've been holding since August 2023, these have included our stakeholders. We've held quarterly meetings, and these meetings have really been to focus on reviewing progress, analyzing strategies, what needs to be revised. And then we also held our first in-person meeting in September 24th last month. And in that meeting, we really brought together our community partners and looked at what needs, what barriers people were facing, any revisions to the action plans, and discussing those proposed revisions. And this is just a quick snapshot of our website for the CHIP, and really easy to navigate. You can just click on these different tiles specific to subject areas. And just going to highlight a few of the strategies that we have for the different priorities. For addressing homelessness, one priority was we reinstated our Open Doors program, held our first meeting last May, and our next Open Doors event is on November 14th. And this is really to reach out to those homeless individuals who are not accessing services, like through coordinated entry, and get them connected to resources and services. And we also have some partners that are working on affordable housing developments, including breaking ground and some units that have already been constructed. For reducing sexually transmitted infections, we formed a collaborative that is being led by Dr. Liu, and this collaborative is working with our partners to look at the current curriculum and develop a more age-appropriate curriculum for our high school and higher education Finally, our building resilient communities priority. For addressing ACEs, we have expanded our home visiting programs and also the Handle with Care program. And for behavioral health, we have started our learning collaboratives that are led by Sarah Eberhart Rios. We've held a few of those meetings already, and those will continue into the next couple of years. And with the nutrition and food access, we've aligned our strategies with the recently-launched Yuba-Sutter Food Policy Council to really align those strategies, which include expanding farmers' markets and also developing a food-as-medicine curriculum, actually toolkit. And also, I just really wanted to highlight, as part of our Community Health Assessment, we annually update our Low Cost, No Cost Resources Guide, and our staff, Danielle Rigera, who is in the audience, she did a fabulous job, led the effort to really update this resource guide, add new resources, and really redo the format to make it really easy to navigate and user-friendly. Also want to thank all of our partners. We couldn't do this work without all our partners that are shown here. Finally, our contact information, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
To the chair.
Yes.
Just briefly, I got to stop by the community meeting in September, and they had a great cross-section of our community, and it was really well-attended, and they did a great job running it. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their efforts.
Thanks for coming, Steve.
Thank you.
Approval of a Second Amendment to the Employment Agreement with Hardeep Singh, M.D., to provide psychiatry services to clients of Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026, for the purpose of modifying salary commensurate with modified duties, updating the effective date of the 2025 salary increase, and including additional language related to medical residency supervision under Section 4, compensation and Exhibit A, medical director duties, effective the first full pay period after board approval.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Rick Bingham, the Behavioral Health Director for Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health and the Assistant Director for Health and Human Services. California regulations require Behavioral Health to have a licensed psychiatrist to oversee all medical responsibilities for our clinic. And Dr. Singh is Behavioral Health's Medical Director. And so as such, as noted, he oversees the services provided by all of our doctors and nurses. That's for all adult, youth, inpatient, and substance use services at Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health. And as we know, there's a dearth of providers in the state and the country, and this is especially true for psychiatrists. So there's about 6,000 psychiatrists in the state of California, and there's also about 40% of the residents of California are Medi-Cal recipients. And so many of those individuals go to county behavioral health clinics to get their care. About 27% of all of the psychiatrists are working in county clinics. So you have 27% of psychiatrists serving 40% of the California population. And so locally, we felt this shortage in staffing. We've been recruiting for a vacant psychiatrist position since March of 2023 with only two applicants. Unfortunately, neither of those was interested once they learned of our location and salary. And, you know, not having positions filled, these psychiatry positions filled results in higher costs for us in the county. We have to temporarily fill those positions with what are called locum tenen providers, and these are psychiatrists hired through a registry for a three-month period at very high hourly rates. The most recent rates that we were quoted were between $300 and $345 per hour, which equates to somewhere between $624,000 to almost $718,000 annually, which is significantly more than we're paying our psychiatrists and our medical director. And then after the three months have ended that we have this locum, we have to start our search for a new provider. That could take another one to three months. This, of course, results in gaps in services for our clients and a greater burden on the other psychiatrists who have to take on some caseloads. And so it's not uncommon in these situations for some of our clients to come in and see a different provider every time they go to Behavioral Health, and that obviously is not great client care. So as noted previously, we're coming to the board to amend Dr. Singh's contract, with the first reason being to modify salary to be commensurate with duties. And so we provide a $25,000 annual differential for any psychiatrist assigned to the psychiatric health facility, otherwise known as the PUF, and this is due to the related increased risk associated with that position. And so our previous PUF psychiatrist resigned from the PUF and moved to outpatient, so he's still with us, which is good news. And so as a result, his salary was reduced by $25,000 on April 9th through action of this board. And so we're requesting to transfer that $25,000 to Dr. Singh, due to the fact that Dr. Singh is taking on the direct clinical duties on the PUF, despite his medical director duties and maintaining a small outpatient caseload. HR provided us with a salary study done just this month, and we learned that Dr. Singh's salary is on par with other comparison counties with respect to medical director. It is 14.9% lower than other compared counties, and then 20.5% lower than other psychiatric medical director positions when compared with those individuals in correctional facilities. So because telehealth is much more accessible than it was prior to COVID, many providers work remotely, which, of course, eliminates the need for relocation. And so as a result, we end up competing with providers throughout the state of California. I'm aware, for example, of many jail providers whose psychiatrists do not come in person. They provide services via telehealth. The second change that we're requesting is an update to the effective date of a salary increase. So on September 26, 2023, the board approved employment agreements with the psychiatrists and nurse practitioners, and the last increase per the MOU is scheduled to occur July 1, 2025. So we're requesting that this be changed to July 12, 2025, to align with county pay periods. And then the last change that we're requesting is language related to residency supervision. So Behavioral Health is participating in a residency program to train medical students in psychiatry. So this is kind of the first of its kind in the rural north area, and so we're very happy to be participating in this, and we've never done this before at Behavioral Health. The program is with Healthy Rural California, who pays stipends to psychiatrists who help supervise the medical students during the rotation, and that stipend amount is $4,000. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions for the board?
I'd move approval of the recommended action. I appreciate your report, Rick.
Do we have any speaker cards?
No. Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most passing unanimously. Neil Hay. Item 21.
Adoption of a resolution authorizing the installation of a stop sign along the southbound lane on Live Oak Boulevard at Eager Road.
We have a, we held this item last meeting because Nick wanted to review it. Supervisor McKelley. And so my question is, Neil, how urgent is this that we do it right now, or we pun it again for next week?
It is next week, actually.
At your board's discretion, I'd be happy to return at your next meeting and make your presentation.
It's next week? I'd recommend we move it to next week, then.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay. We'll table this till the following meeting. Okay, item number 22.
Wait, through the chair. We don't have to vote on that, do we? You can just move it over. County Council? All right.
I don't think so. Item 22. Neil, you're still on deck.
Approval of an amendment number one to the independent contractor agreement with E Corp Consulting, Inc., extending the term of the agreement to October 31, 2025, and increasing the total compensation from $100,000 to $250,000 for environmental permitting assistance for up to nine emergency culvert repair sites within the county, and authorization for the Director of Development Services or their designee to execute an amendment.
Good afternoon, Chair and supervisors. So as mentioned, this is an existing contract with the Environmental Consultant that's helped us pursue the environmental permits for the failed culverts throughout the county. the county. Uh, most recently, we have submitted an application for a permit for a culvert at Keys Road that's failing, and we're seeking to replace that with a contractor. We already have a contract in place, uh, once we receive the permit, and then this would allow us to pursue the other culvert replacements, which my department has already prepared the bid packages. Uh, we are, you know, once again awaiting the permits from the State Fish and Wildlife, and then we would be able to proceed with the repairs. The, uh, the increase is due for the onsite biological supervision. So now what happens is that once we get past November first, we are required to have a biologist onsite during any construction or ground disturbing activities in case we, uh, discover a GGS, a giant garter snake. Um, so we don't expect to use all of those funds, uh, but we wanted to make a, a conservative, uh, kind of allowance, uh, so that hopefully we could do this one time and then be able to proceed with, with the work, hopefully throughout the winter, uh, when there are, uh, dry windows, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, any speaker cards?
Nope.
No, I just moved for approval because this is gonna help us get these culverts repaired as soon as possible.
Second a motion.
I agree, um, these culverts are a problem. And we have, how many? Twelve hundred?
Uh, in total, we have just under twelve hundred crossings in the county.
And no source of revenue to repair them. And they're all fifty to a hundred years old. So, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most have passed unanimously. Okay, Steve Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Um, just a couple things, as you mentioned, there is a meeting next Tuesday. Usually it's every other week, but with the approaching holidays, uh, the schedule changes a bit, so we'll be here next Tuesday at three. And also, uh, briefly, Molly Bloom, the Museum Director and Curator, who presented here last meeting, also presented at the city last week and did a great job there. And, uh, the museum is closed through October twenty-ninth. That's all, thank you.
Um, we have, um, follow reports announcements. So, uh, correspondence, we have several there. Uh, do we have any board? Mike, you wanna start?
Yeah, I'd like to close in memory of, um, George Pappas. I'm, I'm assuming all of us will want to get on that one.
Yeah, do that, please.
And, um, Dante Corciola, who passed away last month in a vehicle accident. Sutter High School graduate, very sad young man, great guy. Um, and then I'd like to have the county, like to have a plaque made up for, um, Ray McReynolds. His funeral will be in a few weeks, be nice to hand that funeral. He served a few years in the fire department for Sutter County. Um, and Norma Sanborn of Meridian, who passed away. Um, and then on a positive note, like to have a plaque made up for the Britton School eighth grade team. They, uh, went undefeated this year, second year in a row. They won their, the championship, have that with the coaches' names and the team's names. Um, tonight, Supervisor Baines and my daughter will finish out their JV year tonight at El Camino, and if everything goes right, they'll finish the season undefeated. So we're proud of our, uh, JV girls team, really exciting to watch, and then the varsity team's undefeated as well in, in league. Um, so that's really cool. I believe East Nick is undefeated in League Two right now.
I think they're twenty-three and oh overall.
Really? Haven't lost one game?
Twenty-three.
Not one?
It's amazing.
Congratulations, East Nick's team. So we'd, like I said, we'd like to, I think we, we send a plaque out to these teams that, you know, win their league championships tonight, that's a big deal. Especially, it used to be, was easier to get through the league, then the section was tough, now it's tough to get through the league and get to that league championship. It's a big deal. Um, so that's it for me. Um, thank you very much. Oh, and Sutter High School in two weeks plays for their league championship. They're undefeated, and they'll be playing Costa Robles, who is undefeated too, for that league championship a week from this Friday.
Uh, just one item. I'd like to request that we have a recognition for the Baines family, actually, who's been farming in the Sutter community a hundred years this, uh, this year is a hundredth year. So if we could provide that recognition, I'd like to have that.
Can we make a plaque from that? That'd actually be really nice. See, that's one reason I'd like to have.
That would be great, yeah, that we.
That's one.
Recognition plaque.
Sorry, through the chair, that's one reason I'd like to have our own meeting place that we could actually put up, and if we could maybe get with you with CDC if it's possible, put some sort of pictures up or something, you know, since we are meeting here as well, but it's nice to showcase the great things that we do in Sutter County as well.
Carm.
Yeah, a couple letters of condolences and sympathy to go out to the families of Ichbal Joel, and also to the family of Grameet Kor Sangha. And I'd like to request a, either proclamation or a resolution be made for the forty-fifth annual Sikh parade, the Nukleukidum that's coming up on November third, uh, twenty twenty-four. And if the county could please follow up or maybe with a thank you letter to the California Commission on Asian Pacific Islander American Affairs for hosting, um, today they were here at, um, from two to three-thirty at Edel Hall for the Yuba Sutter Sikh Listening Session. So if staff could just look into that and do a follow-up, it'd be appreciated. And I, sorry, and, um, I think I brought this up a number of times, and it's probably this is appropriate time after having that listening session, is to have staff look into having a, um, like we have the Latino, um, Outreach Center or the Mong Outreach Center, if we could look into, um, what it would be to, what we could do to have an Indian Outreach Center in the community to provide resources to those individuals. Thank you.
Uh, I just have one thing, uh, it's nice to have Carm back from his trip. Sounds like you had a wonderful time with your family. I think that's great. Uh, we now need a motion and a second for the approval of.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Minion Hearn.
Thank you for getting us out of here.
What's that?